We have seven members. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So we have a quorum. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6:03. Can I get someone to make a motion to accept the agenda?
Uh-huh.
Okay. And is that Bonnie making a second? Sure, yes, alright, awesome. Um, any additions or anything? I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Okay. So all of those-
I don't need an executive session, but we can talk about that.
Okay. So all of those that approve the agenda, please signify by saying aye or waving at me.
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. Alright, communications with parents, citizens, and staff. Um, is there anyone who would like to talk to us tonight? I see Ms. Dasha's here. Did you wanna talk to the board? I see you're trying, you were trying to connect, but you didn't say anything.
There, you're not muted now. Try again. Dasha, I'm gonna open the chat. What is open? Let us know if you're, if you're trying to talk or not. Oh, it's my fault.
Ah.
Dasha, it's my fault. Okay, go right ahead, so sorry about that.
I really don't have anything to say, I was just, um, listening in.
After all that, okay, thank you.
Fair enough, thank you.
No, I'm so sorry, I was adding more.
You're welcome.
No worries. Alright, so, um, I have not really seen anything-
Recording in progress.
Oh, thank you. Um, I have not seen anything on "Let's Talk", um, so we're going to continue to move on. Consent agenda. Can I get someone to make a motion for the consent? Yes, Derek.
I shall move to accept the consent agenda.
Okay, thanks Derek, someone with a second?
Second.
Eric's seconding? Excellent. Um, all of those that approve the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Perfect. We have, that is, I don't need to see if there's any nays, 'cause you all said yes. Excellent. Um, board professional development. So, public participation at board meetings. Discussion regarding the introductory language for public comment section on agendas. So, we had, um, three brought forward? We had the original one, oh, four, sorry.
Well, the original plus three more.
Plus three more, okay. So, um, who wants to start this conversation? Or where would you like to start? Yes, Derek?
Uh, I'll start it. Um, my understanding is that we're being asked to adopt this so that it presents at our agenda for public comment time. Is that correct?
It, it, it's mainly to put on the agenda so that if someone comes to speak to us, they know what to expect.
Right. And you do this at the RNSU board meetings?
They do this right now at the Barstow meetings. We have not talked about it at the RNESU level, but I'm sure we will. We only meet once a month, so, but Barstow does this currently.
I was at an RNSU meeting where something similar to this was presented as part of the agenda. Is that correct?
I don't remember. Um, it might, maybe we put it on there and we didn't actually ask for discussion because it's the melding of two boards, so we tend to take what the two boards have together, but I don't remember.
I recall being zoomed into a meeting.
Okay.
And, um, language like this was presented.
Maybe.
And it was, it felt right, it felt very good, it felt very smooth, it felt very appropriate, um, and it didn't have any of the angst that people had discussed that they were fearful of. You know, when I heard it, it sounded perfect, it was like, oh, I get it now, once you've seen it, you know? And, and you said they do it at Barstow.
Yep.
Yeah, so I think we should, um, go ahead with it, you know? It, it does set the stage nicely when we have public comment time. Do you, can we, also, does it become um, a protocol for, like, the, the open forums for superintendent's meeting, uh, the search meetings and those kinds of things? Does it become a template that we use?
I think it does, I mean, I think it makes sense that it, that it would, only because we are, you know, even though we're three different boards, we still are one supervisory union.
Right.
So we are trying very hard to make it easy on our superintendent.
Yeah.
And I think it makes it easier for our constituents, who are members of at least two at any given time, two of our boards, to be able to expect the same thing at each board.
Right. We periodically, if not frequently, try to have a discussion about consistency of, across the three boards that are in our supervisory union. We should have some give and take and reflections of each other's language and, and make it as consistent as, as, uh, as possible. And the exceptions may be very few.
Yep.
For local, particular local reasons.
Sure. So is there a particular one that you like better than the other? Or did you work, you know?
I did not.
Okay.
I mean, I was looking at the one that was in our packet.
There were three.
Oh, there were three, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's-
I was studying one.
That's okay.
Over the other.
You were doing the single-page one that says D.
Oh, I see.
The others are behind, if you printed two-sided, they were behind one of the MOUs.
There's A, B, C, D?
Yes.
Oh, that's what I, okay. Yes, there, that's what I was looking at. Um, but, um, so to choose one over the other? I don't have a strong sense.
Okay.
I feel that some, you know, if other people have come to, uh, some specific things, some specific issues with some of these, that's fine with me. I, I just think that we need something like this.
Okay. Anybody else? Um, Bonnie, yes?
I like B.
You like B?
I don't really know why, but I just like the way B read. When I, when I read it through, I felt like that was one I didn't have to reread, like, I, I don't remember one of them I reread to make sure I read it correctly. I just felt like B was, I got what it said on the first read-through. I don't know why.
Okay. Are you saying no to this?
Yeah, I was concerned about, about the-
Slandrous, abusive, or personal, or personal statements? Did you not like that part?
That last sentence bothered me. I mean, if, if we're trying to just not be confrontational, but to say this is what you can expect, that sentence bothered me. Otherwise, I thought it was fine.
Okay, well, well, um, you're mulling that over, Bonnie. Um, Barbara, what have you got?
I'm not against any of them.
Okay. But you like B better. That's fine.
Yeah, some, and, and I'm not, I agree with that comment on the, that we could change the wording on that, or B, I think, and my second choice was D, I think.
Okay. Alright, Barbara?
Yeah, I'm not, I didn't think any were bad, you know, none were bad.
Sure. Okay. Barbara?
I too liked B, uh, but I do agree that last sentence might, maybe while we're trying to avoid that, it might actually suggest it, or something like that.
Okay.
And I found, I found C maybe a little too mathematical in terms of, here's the available time, we're gonna split it up this much, I, that just seemed confusing.
Sure.
I liked, I liked in B, the, uh, you know, speaking time may be limited, which doesn't mean it will be limited, just opens the possibility that it may be limited if necessary. So that addressed, I think, both the concern at the last meeting, but also the incorporates the VSBA's, like, kind of guidelines about time. You need, feel the need to impose a time constraint, but it doesn't say we will impose it just as we may, or the board chair may. And I, but I like the wording of, of, of B, up to maybe that last sentence.
I concur.
Okay. Um, Derek?
Is there, um, is there another place in the board chair rules or, or authority to get at that issue of, of someone needing to be, uh, pointedly, uh, uh, informed that they're out of order?
Well, I, I think-
Robert's rules.
Yeah, I think we could probably just say the board chair may rule out any speaker, any, or may rule any speaker out of order.
For just cause, or something like that.
Right, um, um, for, right, for statements that incite or promote violence, if you really wanted to leave that in there. I think I'd almost say the board chair may rule out any speaker out of order for inappropriate conduct. And just leave it at that. Because that kind of covers everything. And it doesn't make it all, you know, wordy and-
Preachy.
Yeah, kind of.
Yeah.
Um, Barbara?
Oh, I left my hand up, sorry about that.
Oh, well, then go away.
I might suggest that you add the statement about comments may also be sent to the board using "Let's Talk", just end it that way.
Sure. So, so everyone feel good about B? If we, um, if we, at the very end, the last sentence would say the board chair may rule any speaker out of order, um, for inappropriate conduct? And then add the sentence, comments may also be sent to the board using "Let's Talk", the button on the district website? How do people feel about that? Okay, alright, so Derek, yes, Belle?
Just in terms of B, um, I think that it should not be simply a member of the public moving it forward because that conflicts with Area 4.0 in terms of building the agenda. Board members can add things to it. I was just trying to be a little less specific there.
Board may ask clarifying questions and the superintendent?
We'll not discuss any topics other than those listed on the public-
Public agenda.
The superintendent will bring it to the board for future discussion through the agenda planning process. I don't know that you need that.
If I may. Barstow just used it last week. A, a community issue came to the board on Monday. The board and the superintendent were not prepared to speak to that particular issue. I did not have the data that was needed. So the board then said, listened to all the comments and said, Jean, we'd like you to bring back a report to the next meeting. So that's what this means, that's what this refers to. So the person coming does not expect an immediate, you know, that I'm able to report on absolutely everything at any given moment.
Right.
Um, that the board wasn't even aware was, they were gonna talk about. But they'll listen, and if they feel that they want more information, they will direct the superintendent to bring back information.
I guess what I was concerned about is it says the superintendent, it puts you in a channeling mode which you don't need to be. Uh, I agree with what you're-
About the superintendent will be directed to.
Will that be better?
To bring it to the board for future discussion through the agenda planning. Because that's really what it was. The board directed me to, you know?
As appropriate, I mean-
That's appropriate, yeah. The board, the superintendent may be directed to.
May, I think it says may, that may, yeah.
Good, good catch there.
Any other discussion regarding B at this point? Because it looks like we like this one. It's a B. Um, okay, so someone wanna make the motion?
I move, I move that, uh, we accept B as crafted.
Second.
Okay, Eric seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Was there one that you specifically liked? I didn't even- I did like B. Okay. Yeah. Good. Please feel free to raise your hand or ask questions if you want, so.
I will.
Um, alright, monitoring report, 2.3, financial conditions and activities. You will find that in your packet. It is this one. So this is a review, we've seen this one before, correct?
Yes, this is coming back around from last February.
Alright, so this is the, um, 2.3, financial conditions and activities.
Does she need a packet here?
Oh, we do have an extra packet. So if you would like to look through there.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, I just want you to be able to see what we're looking at. So, um, did anybody see anything through their reading of this that they wanted to ask Jean a question? Or, um, make a comment?
I have a comment.
Okay, go for it.
Um, you may recall last time I did a, a review of 3.0 policies for you, and I talked about, one of your policies speaks to how you monitor the superintendent, and it speaks to three different ways that you can get a, um, an internal report, which this really is, a direct report, or a direct inspection, or an external report. An external report would be an audit. This report, I just point out to you, is both internal and direct inspection because all of the evidence in this one is linked. You can go straight to the evidence. And so that actually makes it a direct inspection. If it were just, because I said so, then that would be internal, and you could ask to see, send somebody in or committee in to look at a direct inspection. So I just wanted to show you how this one actually fulfills two of those slots because it's very easy to absolutely link all the evidence.
It is very clear that way.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
And the other thing that I would point out is that in the past, I was out of compliance with the IRS, and we are back in compliance, as promised.
Yay. Okay. Um, anyone wanna make the motion to accept her, um, monitoring report for 2.3?
Almost.
Thank you. I think that was Becky.
Becky.
And second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Derek. Derek is second, second, bleh, second, I can't say it. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. We have a monitoring report accepted. Thank you very much for that. Okay. Superintendent interpretation of 4.0. So Jean went ahead and did the same thing that she had done for 3.0 with 4.0, so hopefully everybody got to read it. Um, it's very concise and very long, so she was very detailed.
No, you did, the long part is your policies, the blue is what I said.
Okay, alright, well, that's good. So do you wanna speak to it first? Or would you prefer people ask you a question?
I can, I can do a quick walkthrough.
Okay.
So the 4.0 policies are about how the board governs itself. So this, that's why these fall under the board and, and whether or not you are governing yourself. I reminded you that the policy is intended to be taken as a whole, and one of the difficulties I think this board has had when you monitor your own policies is you look at one tiny section at a time, and then it just kinda doesn't make sense. And that's why we're trying this out, a section as a whole. Um, the beginning part says that the board identifies what the ends and the outcomes are and focuses on that. The governing style talks about how, um, it, it, it speaks to its own merit about how the board governs, that the board sets the direction as an entire group. The board has one voice in doing so. Things are hashed out in debate at the board level, but once the board votes, that's the direction of the group. One person cannot change the direction alone. Um, individual board members do not have authority outside the board. Um, the board does initiate policy. If I bring you policy, it's because it's required by the, by the state, and so otherwise you would initiate your own policy. But I kind of keep you on track with the required policies. Um, and the policies are supposed to reflect the values of the organization and also to guide the work of the administration. So the policies tell us how we need to act. Um, the board can change its own policies. It also expects that board members will come prepared and hold each other accountable, and it expects, your policy states that the board will invest in its own professional development for improvement and not allow one person or one committee to detract from, from that. That was the one section where I felt like this board is a little bit weaker on. Um, I was honest in saying so. And, um, I think that there is, this board has really, this particular version of the board in this year has struggled with what is policy governance and what isn't it, and assumptions of how it limits what the board can do. And I think if you delved into it with a really good policy governance consultant, it might help the board come to a decision on how it wants to move forward. So I recommended that. It includes the board job description of the board and all the board members, which lines up with what the Vermont School Board Association manual job description says. You're focusing on policy, you're connecting with the community, you're holding the superintendent accountable and supervising him, her. Um, you're advocating for the needs of the district and you're monitoring finance. In addition, you do negotiate union contracts and conduct quasi-judicial hearings as needed. It talks about how the agenda planning is done. And it talks about how, um, you develop a work plan for the year so that your routine items and the goals that you wanna make sure you get to are planned out for the year. But then each month, you revisit that month's agenda. It's on, you do that in this meeting every month. And there is a possibility to add anything either, uh, for example, Kevin asked to add volunteering for tonight. Uh, Bill is bringing something forward on the, the bill, uh, the bell. Bill is bringing the bell, um, for discussion tonight. So you just add simply by letting the chair know. The agenda generally goes out five days before, so to be on the agenda, you gotta let the chair know before the agenda goes out. Otherwise, you come to the meeting, ask to amend the agenda, and it's up to the board whether the answer is yes or no on the night of the meeting. So the agenda is pretty fluid that way.
Clarification on that.
Yeah.
I read that to mean if a board member brings an item five days or better, it has to be on the agenda.
Um, but a board member may recommend or request an item for board discussion by submitting. It's silent on that.
Recommend and request are pretty different terms.
Reasonable interpretation.
That's what you, you should be doing this reasonable interpretation, so I'll leave it to you as a board when you get to this policy. And you can refine it to say what you want it to say.
I, I think if somebody brings it up, if a board member brings it up, it needs to be on the agenda, but I don't know that everybody agrees with that.
Well, that's why when you monitor this policy, you will add that, propose to add that change to clarify that it would be.
I should do that five days ahead.
No. No, 'cause we're, I'm doing this globally, but this, these are actually on your work plan to go through section by section. You also could ask, um, the chair now to have it on your next agenda, that particular part of this to be on your next agenda, and you can bring it up then. Or you can, I guess, adjust it, a change now. But let me finish the report, and then you can come in.
Just pointing out ambiguities.
Yeah, that's good, that means you read it.
It does.
And if it's unclear, that's good. Um, it does talk about the chair's role. And the role, the chair is elected by this board. Um, and it's defined in this, in Policy 4.4. The chair also cannot speak independently of the board, but does speak for the board. So when the board has a single voice, for example, media usually goes to the chair, and the chair speaks for the board. The chair is supposed to keep the board focused on its work and its performance, but has no direct authority over the superintendent. That belongs to the board as a whole.
I think it's ambiguous on that part. In one place, it says that the chair has superhuman powers.
I don't?
I'm playing with it. Of course you do.
I'm just kidding.
Uh, but then in other places, it says, cannot speak for the board, um, blah, blah, blah. It puts constraints on it.
Yeah.
So it just didn't strike me that that was well-crafted or could be reviewed.
Again, that would be something that you could discuss. I mean, to my, to my reasonable, to my mind, the reasonable interpretation is the chair is the speaker for the board decision, but can't go out on their own and, and-
Say we believe in this and that and the other if we haven't voted to believe in that.
What the board hasn't discussed. So the chair also cannot be an individual pretending to be a board, but the chair is the person who's the spokesperson for the board. So if the board has discussed an issue, then the chair is the person who carries it forward, but the chair can't suddenly decide that, um, on their own, um, we have to paint Outer Valley red instead of blue and white.
Or I can't say to the media that the board thinks this way, even though we haven't actually discussed it.
Disgusted.
So that's where I would say to the media that that's something we haven't discussed, and when we do, we'll let them know.
Um, there is a code of conduct that is clearly laid out here with the expectations, which includes, if you recall the conversation we had last year about conflict of interest, that's within the code of conduct. The expectation to maintain confidentiality, being prepared, et cetera. And then, um, how, you haven't really used board committees much, but how, how they would be formed and how they're governed and authorized is laid out in here. And then again, back to the professional development, that the board understands that in order to be an effective board, it needs to keep its own learning up. Um, I know that Laurie often attends the VSBA trainings. I'm not sure who else might, but, um, the board is responsible for making sure that there are funds in the budget, which you do do each year. We bring it to you each year. So I went through that quickly, and it, what, what Bill just, um, to me, what Bill just portrayed is why, if you could take each one as a section with this bigger concept, then you can drill down and say, what is, I mean, that's what you're supposed to be doing. What are, what is the reasonable interpretation of this section of the policy? And if you don't think that the policy is clear enough, then you recommend changes to the policy so that it's more clear. You have the right to do that as a board.
Um, and I will tell you that on April 6th, we have a plan to look at 4.3, which is agenda planning, and 4.4, which is the chair's role. It's already on our work plan. 4.2 and 4.6 are on there for May 4th, and 4.1 and 4.7 are on here for June 1st. So, just so you know. If you look at the work plan, so they are on there for us to look at. Any questions for Jean on her very succinct and very well-crafted 4.0 explanation? Yes, Belle?
I have plenty of these, I'll try to keep it together a little bit.
That's okay.
Fifty pages in the board preparation materials this month. Twenty-seven of them are on this particular topic. And with the catalogs and so forth and so on, it seems like, um, expecting people to go through twenty-seven pages of fine print is probably not a good, realistic thing.
Twenty-seven pages are on just 4.0 or on policy governance?
4.0. Uh, it has two parts. It has the calendar of presentation things, which would get into policy governance, I would think.
You're talking about the work plan, okay?
Yeah. And plus this particular thing. I'm just cognizant of, if we get it too detailed, it becomes not practical, not usable.
Okay, well, I-
I don't have a solution, mind you, but-
No, no, well, so as far as the work plan is concerned, this is something that we flesh out in August, and then we add or subtract things as we go throughout the years, as other things come up. So, yes, it is a piece of policy governance because it keeps us on track as far as our monitoring reports and, um, policing our own policies.
And your own goals.
And, and, and our goals, yes. And it also allows us to have people come in and give us presentations on different things happening throughout the district. Um, so that will probably, unless we can come up with another way that, that shows what's going on, will always be part of our board packet. And, and it's gonna be, unless someone has another idea. But I, I think it allows us to know what, what we're looking at each meeting. And some of it is redundant. I mean, each, each meeting, we're gonna look at a monitoring report. Each meeting, we're probably gonna look at one of our own, um, our own monitoring reports, not one that the superintendent would bring to us.
I was thinking, is it a good planning tool for Jeanie? Is it a good planning tool for the board?
I think so. I mean, it's great for agenda planning, I will tell you that.
You did it before policy governance.
Yeah.
I, I had never done it before I came here, and it was already in place here. And it's, um, it's very important for agenda planning because we can capture all those routine things that we have to do every year, and it's like, oh yeah, what did we do last February? But then I can look ahead and I can tell Kristin, you need to have an adventum report, an MTSS report ready for February. And I could tell her that back in December, I can tell her that back in August. You know, so it's, it's planned out and not last minute. And not just responding to crisis of the moment, but what, what is it that the board, and the board designs this at your August retreat.
So, uh, that's the only reason that that's there every meeting. So, ho- hopefully it would be something that you would just quickly peruse and not have to, to look at. You know, we look at it so closely in, in August that hopefully every other, any other time that we look at it, it's just to make sure that we're on track. If that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, the first, uh, deep dive into it, to, to get your arms around it Yeah, the first deep dive into it, to get your arms around it and say, this is, this is what this section is all about. That's the hardest part. And, and then it's, it's a lot of, you know, and then it's tweaking it, and then it's interpreting it, and, and it's seeing how it fits and, and when it needs to be changed because of how it goes. So that's, that's less intense, the look at it, so.
Did you have other questions? You said you had other questions.
Oh, I'll pick it up as we go along. I'm just thinking, how can we be rational when we got COVID consuming everything?
Yeah, well, COVID is one of those things that we keep thinking it's going to be gone, and it's still with us. So, okay.
So I don't know if there are any other questions on 4.0, if that was helpful, not helpful.
Was it helpful? Did everyone find that helpful? Barbara's shaking her head yes. Bonnie's shaking her head yes. Becky is shaking her head yes. So I would say that most of us felt good about it. Before we move on, there is a nugget on here that says, "Discussion of Effective and Cohesive Board Functioning." And I put this on here. It is not part of our work plan, or it wasn't. And the reason that I did that was because in the last few months, probably longer than that, I felt that our board has started to not trust each other. And for this board to function well, we need to all trust one another and trust in our decisions. So it means that when we make a decision as a board, even though we as individual board members may not like it, when we go out to the public, we own it as a board because it was our decision. It also means that, I just wanted to have this discussion with you guys because I feel like we're, not that we're falling apart, but that we are not cohesive, and we are not working together as well as we could be. And we were a couple of years ago. I don't know what the change is, but I really want to know from you as board members, and how can we bring that back? Because I'm a little worried that the fact that we are losing three board members in March and have no one to fill them because no one wanted to run is because of this, and people are watching. And that may even be why they wanted to get off the board. I don't know, and you don't have to answer that. But if we need some professional development and coming together again, then let's do it. If we need some professional development, if we just need to have some games around owning whatever our decisions are, then that's what we need. But we cannot continue to keep fracturing, and that's what I feel like we're doing. So I'm going to shut up now, and I'd love to hear what you have to say. Barbara?
Thank you, thanks Lori for saying, saying this and bringing it up. I, I'm, I feel like we should talk about this maybe when we have a more complete...
Well, and that's the other thing, we're missing five members tonight, and I only heard from one of them to tell me that they weren't coming. And that's, that, that's worrisome because if we could move down to only 10 board members and only six of us show up, that is not a quorum because, so that, that's worrisome to me. But anyway, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I feel like your word, I feel like your words need to be heard by, well, all 13 or all however many of us are still sitting on the board or, you know, planning to go forward, sitting on the board. It's important that we all are present. It's really unfortunate that we don't have a bigger group here tonight. There's a lot that's being addressed in this particular agenda that's really important for everyone to hear, and not everyone is here. So I don't know what to do about that.
Well, you could, you could recommend to your fellow board members that weren't here that they really should watch the video of this because maybe it will speak to them, and maybe they will reach out to other members of the board to discuss this, which maybe needs to happen. I don't know. Anyone else? Bill?
Without some comments, I'm not sure that it's completely a board problem as much as a social problem. Is that, it used to be, I was in a seminar this afternoon, and they were talking about the difference in politics today as what they, what they've seen before. It used to be that Democrats and Republicans could trust each other and sit down and have a cup of coffee. That's not as easy to do anymore. It's a much more contentious atmosphere, and people in society are distrusting each other. It isn't a matter of just the board members distrusting, to use that word. It's something that's broader than that. And I would go back to the purpose of education, which is to teach people to act in a civilized way. And somehow, we've lost that in our communities, and I don't think we're doing as well as in convincing people that they need to be a part of this thing called a democracy. I, I think we have some disagreements in, among the members of the board, but disagreement doesn't mean disrespect, and it doesn't mean that you have to use root language or anything But I think that a healthy difference of opinion is, I think, a good thing.
Differences of opinion, they're fine, and that's, that's fine. But at the end of the day, when we make a decision, we all have to stand behind that decision and not keep bringing it up. So that's one thing that I see has been happening. The other thing that I want to mention is that, yes, that's what the political place is doing. I would hope that we're not bringing politics. I realize that we are elected officials, but what we're here for is to educate kids, and that that should not be political. But that's just my standpoint.
It's, it's a cultural climate, not as much a political thing.
Again, I would hope that it would, would still, that when, at the end of the day, we look at this and go, why are we here? And it's for kids. So, anyway. Derek?
Jean, you spoke to this in, in your report earlier, right? And made some recommendations around what might help. Could you review those again?
Sure. My observation that I put in the report is that this is a board, half of whom, slightly more than half of whom, have been trained in what policy governance is and isn't. And more recent members of the board have not really been trained. This is a board who has not really been interested in doing their own self-evaluations or in doing their own monitoring reports, which is a form of professional development. And as a result, what I see happening is conversations continually go back to policy governance that really are not policy governance related at all. But I think that's because there's a lack of understanding of what policy governance is and isn't. It's only a way to govern. It's only a, it's good governance is another word for it. You don't have to use the word policy at all. But I think that if people actually understood what your own policies said, then you would feel much more comfortable utilizing them to get the board to where it wants to get to, and to hold a superintendent more accountable. But I think to do that, you need to have some professional development, once again. We unfortunately lost the state consultant. She's not doing it anymore. There's a new retired superintendent coming in who's doing it. I have been asked to try to get hold of a national consultant that several of you heard at the conference in Canada a couple of years ago, and I'm talking to him tomorrow morning. But I, I just think that there's a real lack of understanding, and what often comes out with that lack of understanding is accusatory discussions. And as your outgoing superintendent, so therefore, I don't have to be quite as, I don't know.
You don't have to walk the line.
I don't have to walk the line quite as much because I'm leaving anyway, but it, it can be, it can be exhausting to repeat the same conversation often and not get to a place, like, for example, not get to a place together. And an example of that is the earlier conversation about how something gets on the agenda, and this board has the ability to clarify that in their own policy. So ask to put it on the next agenda and discuss it and clarify it, you know, but, but without a lack of, without fully understanding how it works, I just see the board often spinning circles or, or not moving forward. It's also, in the past couple of years, been very difficult to bring in anyone to provide professional development to the board because it can be pretty uncomfortable for the presenter. Does that help? So I think PD. Joint PD. And then coming to your common understanding, not the superintendent's understanding, superintendent works for you. So what's your common understanding and desire?
Other comments? Yes, Eric?
If everyone agreed on everything at all times, school board meeting would be two and a half minutes long. I am here to hear who disagrees with me. Disagree with me all you want. I will not think contentious thoughts or personally attack you or, but I have witnessed the atmosphere in this room. The moment a difference of opinion is aired, I feel the atmosphere just changed. I want to hear everything that's, that's why I'm here. I have other things I could be doing, but I'm here to hear that. I want to hear everything. And, yeah, a lot of times, yeah, no, I haven't thought about it that way, but no, you put a little bit more thought into it than I did. I have no problem with that, and I think that's what we need to work on. More so than professional development in policy governance, it is the attitude shift of, look, this person is successful, they have kids, they ran for public office, the voters had the confidence to vote this person in, they ought to be heard. That's why they're here. That's what I say. And I want to hear everything, whether I agree with it or like it or not. And you won't know really by looking at me if I can't stand it or if I agree. I will show my agreement or disagreement with yea or nay. My thoughts?
Well, I definitely want everyone's opinion. That, that, I don't want to censor anyone. That's not the, the point of this discussion. The, the point of the discussion is to make sure that we, at the end of the day, are still a board and not fractured. I, that's, that's my concern. So I don't have a problem with that. Yes?
Mike, can I speak to Mike through you?
You mean Eric?
I mean Eric.
Yes.
It's okay, his name's there.
I know, that's all right. Yes.
Thank you for your comments. I don't hear you speak very often, and I'm glad you did, and I, I learn from you when I hear from you.
Thank you.
And, and I, I've been guilty of some of those energy fluctuations.
So you've felt them, though.
I, I know.
Yep.
But we've talked about trust being an issue here, and I think that's a good place to look, and, and you're kind of bringing that up. But what I like to say is, trust as a word isn't, isn't very useful because what it is, 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 it's all about relationships, and trust really is the root word of, of two sides of the relationship. There's, there's trusting as, as part of what we do, and trustworthy behavior is the other side of the coin. You know, you have to be trustworthy so that people will listen to you, and, and, and that builds trusting feelings on the other partner's side, you know? So I think it's, it's important to go there, and that's where the respect comes in, that Bill speaks to often, that we need to have so that we can get to that trusting and trustworthy place often and be a good functioning board, you know? And I disagree with you about, about policy governance because that's such a foundational way that we do business.
Policy governance doesn't affect the attitude.
Can I finish, please?
Right ahead.
It's such a foundational way of, that we do business, that if you really haven't learned what it is and spent some time with it, because it's different than a traditional school board experience. It gets into, there was a good quote about getting into really uncomfortable comments with each other. It's misunderstanding breeds that. So I think it's important that we have a, a common conceptual framework on policy governance and a common vocabulary so we can understand each other about what policy governance is and what it isn't. And it takes a little study, and there's different ways to get that. But, you know, our, our leader's watching us thrash around, and she's saying, you know, one of the mechanisms that can work is professional development, where we get the whole group together to hear the same thing, and we can ask questions in front of each other and hear the same answers. I agree that, that that's, that's the way we should do that. So, so I'm going to disagree with you on, on whether we should pursue policy governance education process.
Perfectly fine. I, I just say, I don't see policy governance changing people's attitude towards someone who disagrees with them. It is in their head.
Yes, I, I understand what you're saying.
That's my point.
Right. And that's where we, it's, I think it's okay for us to talk about respect and...
I'd like there to be almost a welcoming of someone who disagrees. I often welcome it.
Yeah.
Quite often welcome it. I want to hear the entire side, everything.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, and that's a trustworthy behavior is to listen and hear people out.
It means to be very boring if we all just went in, said aye, and took off. It's got to be mixed up a little bit. No, I want to hear some different stuff.
Yep. Bill?
I'm thinking of my son who is playing soccer here, who got a yellow card. And my lesson for him was, it's the one who hits back that gets the yellow card, and that's what it was. And so I would put out that perhaps we should think of as offenders and offenders. Somebody may say something that offends somebody, but it's how you react to it. If you lash back and hit back with words, you've just continued the fight.
Great point.
And I think a lot of times, we just, we reinforce improper behavior by responding to it, by lashing back. And so I think that when something is said that's wrong, sometimes we just blow it off. You let it go. We should not take offense too quickly because somebody says something. They're responsible for what they said.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So that really wasn't, you know, we didn't have to make anything out of it. Hopefully, we can get the PD going with the gentleman that you're talking with, and hopefully have that. I would like to tell you that when that policy govern, if, when we have that policy governance training, that I would like to tell you that it's all mandatory. Because I, because the issue is, is that if we don't all attend together, then we're still in the same situation.
Yeah.
So I, I want to make sure that everyone understands that. Bill, you have your...
I don't think it's all policy governance.
I, no, I, I think you're probably right, but, but I, I think that policy governance is one of those sticking points, and, and if, when we have that policy training, I hope that everybody goes.
Derek said it well. It's a basic foundation, common language that allows for other things to happen.
Thank you for bringing the topic up.
True.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so we need to finalize the annual district meeting presentation. I thought you were doing that.
I, I am. I can show you what we have, or you can show up on February 23rd and see it.
No, that, what's the, would everyone like to see what we're going to show everyone?
Should I get my hat and my walking stick?
It, it's not. I can, I can just briefly go through it. It won't take you.
Sure. Sure.
I don't think that's it, so let me try that again. Um, stop share, I thought I left it on it, but I didn't.
I think we're looking at tax cuts for the most part, are we not? We're looking at tax cuts for the most part.
We are?
It makes it a lot easier.
Here we go. Okay. So we'll just take you through a slideshow with some cute kids. Again, we talk about the drivers and the mission and the vision and your N's policy and the district goals. Um, again, if anything, if you don't want anything in this, if you feel like it's too much or you want to change it, let me know. Um, we review the timeline. We show what each school's data is, so that people can actually see what we've got. We talk about the after-school, um, funding. Then we get into the proposed budget, what the actual changes are going to be, what the increases and what the money is going towards. And, uh, in a summary as well, that's still part of the same slide. Then Brenda will get into the actual numbers. These slides are actually in the annual report as well. This isn't the only place people would see them, but will, she will highlight them as she goes through them. And then we get into the tax rate, which your unified tax rate before CLA will be down five and a half cents. And then she says, how is that applied to each town, once they get their grand list and what, what the difference would be. And then we finish up with reminding people that they can do early voting at town offices or request an absentee ballot to mail in or vote in person. Those capital O's are on, on purpose. Um, because there are three ways that you could vote. And that's it. Then you get more kids.
Cool. Okay, any questions? Yes, Bill?
Remind me about this information that it has to be a real life meeting.
Correct.
And we cannot, can we use the Zoom to let people listen in at least?
Oddly enough, according to, um, the state secretary's office, we cannot. Unlike board meetings where you can have a hybrid and people can listen in, they said, no, if you voted to be in person, you're in person.
Well, if you have to be a real person.
Record it maybe and have people watch it later. I don't see there's any problem with that, but we can't have it a live, a live Zoom. I, it's not my call, it's the legislature's call.
Doesn't make a lot of sense. I could see if you're, you can't vote if you're not there. That's, makes sense to me, but it seems like this is information purveyed.
So my recommendation will be that we, we can record it and put it out after the fact.
We could record it or have the media, a television station could come in and run the thing live if they wanted to, but we can't do Zoom. Okay.
Sorry.
Wasn't our, it wasn't our decision. Okay. Any other questions about the annual meeting? It is in person, there will be no Zoom option, just so everyone knows. We'll be here at Otter Valley in the auditorium. Or should I say the theater? Okay, so board member recruitment. We have open seats on our ballot. Our Lester seat for three-year term is open. Our three-year term is, uh, for Pittsburgh seat is open. And our one year remaining of a three-year term on an at-large seat is open. So, um, for those people who are watching us or, um, for anyone else who's listening, um, if you want to run, uh, a write-in campaign, what needs to happen is that for the at-large position, you need to get at least sixty votes um, in order to win the seat. That's for the at-large. For the Lester and Pittsburgh seat, you have to get at least ten, what, I don't remember what the number is. But it, it's a much smaller number because the towns are smaller. So you can check with your, um, town clerk to find out how many votes you would need in order to win. That's how Bill won. Hmm?
Yeah, signatures or votes?
No, it's votes. It's actual votes. Um, and that way you could win your seat on the March first election. Otherwise, um, if they're still not filled at that point, we would, um, request people to write in to us to want to fill those seats. And then we get to decide how we're going to fill those seats as board member, as, as a board. So if you know anybody from Pittsburgh or Leicester or from any town who would, might want to run for the at-large, please get them to think about it. So, okay?
So Barry, Bonnie, and Angela can run, but they can't hide?
That's right. Um, I'm going to write them in. I don't know about you guys. So, okay. Um, RNESU board update. So the update on the superintendent search. So, um, I can tell you and Becky and Barbara chime in where I mess up. Uh, we had initial interviews last Thursday. We interviewed three candidates. We are bringing all three candidates forward for a second interview tomorrow. They were also supposed to come and visit all the schools tomorrow, but because of the impending storm, we have moved that all to virtual. We are also having, um, candidate forums tomorrow night via Zoom, starting at five fifteen. The Zoom link will be on the RNESU website. And each candidate will have forty-five minutes to answer questions or, um, talk about themselves, however they want to fill that forty-five minutes, um, to talk to all of us. Anybody who wants to come, any community member, whatever. So I would definitely invite you to join the Zoom. Um, and then there will be a let's talk button that you can hit so that you can give your, um, opinions of each candidate. So we would really like the can, um, community input. We have put it out on Facebook, we've put it on Front Porch Forum, we've put it, we, through all of the school websites. Um, we've sent out emails. I'm sure some people have gotten them. Hopefully you all did. Um, so we really would like to see the community come out and, and help us, um, see who we really like as our next superintendent. Questions? Did I forget anything, Barbara or Becky? Um, I should also tell you that, um, Friday night at, uh, the RNESU board will meet and hopefully decide who our next superintendent is going to be. Or at least be able to offer the job to someone, so.
References have been checked and you got together with each other to discuss her, what you.
Everybody on the committee was, was told to, uh, go out to their counterparts for a reference check on all three candidates. And to my knowledge, from what I've seen in my email, most of that has been completed. It has to be completed by Friday morning. So, so I reached out to board chairs. Um, the, Brenda has reached out to, uh,
Business manager.
Business managers. Kristen Hubert has reached out to CIA directors. Um, Marsha's reached out to special ed directors. Um, we've asked, Melinda reached out to assistant to superintendents. We had the principal reach out to principals, um, and teacher, the teacher that we had reached out to teachers in their districts. So.
You have ten or fifteen different pictures.
Yeah, we're gonna, right, we're gonna have all these different, yeah, so then we got to put the puzzle pieces together, see if they fit.
And the people who participate tomorrow night also.
Right, they also, right, those people also provide input as well. Okay? So, wish us luck. Because we're, two of the candidates that we, um, are putting forth, um, have already gotten offers, correct? Or might have offers.
They're finalists in two other districts.
Also in two other districts.
I don't know the status of the authors.
So. Yeah, that's why we're moving fast. Um, anyone have, uh, any other questions about the superintendent search or what we're doing on the RNESU board? Um, one thing, other thing I will mention about this is that going forward, we will have an RNESU update at every meeting. Because I realize that's something missing that, that you guys should be aware of is what's going on at the SU level. Okay? Yes?
Um, a question for Padua.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of this forum tomorrow night, um, being able to listen to the superintendents making some position statements or telling their stories. I was, I was just wondering if there was any way that, that, uh, some students could watch that and, and give us some feedback? Um, I don't know if there's a student government?
Oh, we have student councils for all the grades.
I don't know if that's something they'd be interested in, in, in participating in or, or if there's a way to just, uh, get the word out that we'd like some feedback from students on this?
I mean, it's, um, it's a little bit late notice.
I know.
But, but I can, um, talk to Allison Callahan, the, like, person in charge of um, a lot of the student council stuff at the high school level. Um, and I can ask her what she thinks and if she can reach out to.
Just to see if there's any interest in, in folks.
I would also, um, point out that, um, via Zoom, each of the candidates is going to be going to each school. So hopefully when they get to Otter Valley, um, there's already going to be a cohort of kids that are able to go to that part of the Zoom or during that forty-five minute period when they're, they're meeting in the schools.
Okay.
So hopefully.
Well, that would be a way, that would be a way to do that.
Yeah, yeah. When, yeah.
I'm sending, I'm sending it to you now and forwarding it to you now.
Perfect, okay.
And then pass it on to whoever you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Moving on, unless, propose.
Another question?
Yes, sir.
Will the candidates be running into each other?
It's all via Zoom, so no.
Okay.
That would make it more interesting.
It would, kind of.
I've handled that before.
Yeah.
It is more interesting, but, oh my goodness.
No, so it's all via Zoom. It, and otherwise they were going to be shuttled around by three different drivers so that that would not happen if, um, so, yeah, exactly. So, should not happen. Proposal for Arnold District Road School Bell donation to the Brandon Museum. I believe that is you, Bill.
Well, this is kind of an exciting little idea. Is the Arnold District Road School. Um, the building's a beautiful thing, is still there, and the bell was taken out of that when it went into private hands and then went into the cupola of the Little Red Schoolhouse on the Nashvane campus. Where you cannot ring it, the rope is frozen.
Yeah, you try.
The, um, you can't see it, you can't touch it, you can't have kids come in and do things. You, or use it for, uh, educational kinds of purposes. And so the idea came up that, uh, we need to get that bell out of there to, and put it in a place where it could be seen and touched and what have you, and what better place than the museum? Uh, my suggestion is, I like the idea a great deal. And I'm trying to get hold of the Historical Society at this point. And I've talked to other people about it, and everybody likes it a great deal. But, um, I would suggest that, uh, the school district put it on long-term loan rather than, uh, give title to it because in a, in a sense, it was bought when it was the Brandon Towns School District. Uh, but I'd like to see it displayed in the terms of agreement with, uh, museum would be to, uh, you display it, you have a little card that shows what it is, and use it for educational activities. So that's where it is. Um, and I think what we would need is permission from this group, uh, to, to proceed.
Are you making that motion?
I'm making that motion.
Is the museum interested in it?
Is the museum interested in it? That's what Eric's asking. Eric, oh, Eric is asking you if the museum is interested in it, do they want it?
That's who I can't get hold of right now. Uh, I put in two calls to John Dills, who's basically runs the museum.
Also called Bernie Carr. He can get a hold of John.
Well, that's the thing, I went over to the Arnold, to the museum to see who was there, and it's the Chamber of Commerce who really runs the show anyway. So it's Bernie.
Yeah, I would reach out to Bernie, he could get a hold of John or whoever.
Yeah.
Or the Stephen Douglas, they're actually changing their name to something else now, so.
Well.
Um, so, yeah.
The sign says the Brandon Museum.
Right, the Brandon Museum is staying, yes, that way. So it's the group that run, I don't know, anyway. So I would reach out to Bernie.
Yeah, and I'd like to keep that hook in it that it's the school district property on loan, just in case something many years down the road gets funded.
All right, so Bill's making that motion. Who would like to second it?
And your motion is the authority to explore loaning the bill, the bell, right? Is that, you're asking for permission to explore?
No, I'm asking do it.
Oh, okay. You don't know if they're interested.
As long as there's long-term, as long as it's on a long-term loan and that they want it.
If they make the, if they are agreeable and they meet those terms, then we got a deal.
So Eric is seconding. Any other questions for Bill at this point? Yep?
Just a comment, uh, to, to extend it a little further. To see if there's a possibility of including, uh, some kind of specialized project for, you know, an OV class or something like that to, maybe to build the cribbing to hold it on or something like that, or, uh, I mean, somebody's going to have to do that, too. And maybe we could integrate it into a, a student-based activity somehow.
My job, you're, you must be listening to the conversations.
Oh, no. Just good ideas, you know.
Two ads are better than one, I tell you. Okay.
Must be a good idea.
All right, so that's, yeah, so it's a great idea. Any other discussion for Bill at this point? Questions? Okay, all those in favor of, um, giving the bell on a long-term loan to the museum if they so are inclined? And having it put up on something by an OV class here at Otter Valley? Please signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, the next one, volunteering in schools. So this was something that, um, Kevin asked to put on the addenda. I don't know if we want to bring it back at a different time or, um, if we want to discuss now, but he seemed to have things he wanted to ask or discuss.
He put it on the agenda, I would rather hear what he had to say.
Okay?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Eric that, uh, for the, uh, for the sake of building trust and respect, uh, we should have Kevin here to be a part of that discussion. And I, I don't mean to kick the can down the road.
Nope.
And I hope he doesn't interpret it that way, but, uh, that he should be included in the conversation.
So what I'm going to tell you is that, um, we will not have time to do that at our reorganizational meeting on March sixteenth. So we are going to have to move it to April sixth. Okay? All right.
Yeah, hopefully he'll be a part of that.
All right, so we will move it to April sixth.
Volunteers with CDLs are most appreciated.
Absolutely.
Oh, sure, okay. All right, uh, review board annual work plan. So we just did actually do that, so. So, um, unless somebody else has something they want to talk about regarding our work plan, um, our next meeting is canceled because, um, our illustrious leader here, superintendent, can't make it.
And.
And it's vacation, and we're still waiting.
And you're, it's not vacation.
Right.
You're still waiting on the feasibility report.
That's true. So we are going to wait, um, and so March second is also, um, not a regular board meeting because that would be new board orientation, if we have any new board members. Um, so our next meeting, our next full board meeting would be March sixteenth after, um, we get together. Um, we do, we do have the annual, um, we do have our annual meeting, which is on February
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third at six-thirty here at the OV UHS Theater. There will be no Zoom in for that. Okay, um, Jean, did you want to talk to anything in your informational report?
I do. Um, I want to give you an update on the administrative searches right now. Um, um, Michael Ruppel, the new principal at Otter Valley, is participating in the associate principal search to replace Jeff Lawrence. Um, we have chosen five candidates to do virtual interviews on Monday. And the reason we chose that is, is we only have the one, maybe it's Tuesday. We only have the one day to do it, and there are five of them. We're going to narrow it from the five down to two to come do visits in the school, meet with students, meet with faculty on February sixteenth. So our hope is to wrap that one up by March first. Uh, meanwhile. Uh, meanwhile, um, Otter Creek Academy, Tom Fleury, has announced that he's leaving. And so we have started that process. Currently, the posting is up. It closes Sunday. That committee, Search Committee, will, um, choose candidates next week, and invite them to interview at Lester School, the, uh, the fourteenth of fifteenth. So that week of fourteen, fifteen, sixteen is a, a lot of administrative interviews. Um, again, hopefully we'll wrap both of those things up, um, by March first, hopefully, if all goes well. If not, that's good timing to reopen, if that's what we have to do. But I, I feel like we have some good, good possibilities at both. Negotiations for teachers are continuing. We unfortunately had to cancel both January sessions, one due to weather, and one due to, um, a key person not being able to attend. So we're meeting again on Monday. And, um, this is, gosh, Becky, I think it's maybe our fourth or fifth session with them, so we're, we're, you know, into the process. Pair of educators and bus drivers open negotiations with a meeting on Wednesday. So that one's just beginning. COVID numbers are going down in the schools, and our shift to test at home is starting to smooth out a little bit. Um, one of my colleagues described it as we're shifting from being a pediatric, um, uh, medical center to a distribution warehouse. Because now, now, if, if there's a positive case, um, we no longer identify who's a close contact within fifteen feet, or within six feet for more than fifteen minutes. Now we just assume that everybody around them is a presumptive contact, and depending on their vaccination sta- status, that the whole group, the whole class of presumptive contacts, get either two tests to take at home on day four and five, or five tests to take, all five days. And it's incumbent upon the parent to ensure the testing is happening, but we do not track it. We are not able to track, we are told not to track it. Um, we can respond to symptoms in school, and test students before they go home, or if for some reason a parent is just not able to do it, they can communicate with the school nurse, and we'll test when the child comes back in. So it's really shifted the load on the school nurses, and it's actually given the nurses and me a couple of weekends without phone calls all weekend long. Um, yeah, but our numbers are also going down. We really peaked that first two weeks in January, at about thirty-five, forty cases a day in the district. We're now down to about five to six cases a day.
Can I ask a question? Is there a specific criteria or list of symptoms in, that you have to leave?
Yes, there is. It's been, it's been communicated often, um, and it's on the Agency of Education website. If you just go to Vermont COVID page, it'll tell it to you, but there are-
I see that there, just, it is that list, that list, nothing else?
It, right, right, although we don't want any sick kids to come to school, especially because what's really going through the district also concerning is RSV, the respiratory. And that's very concerning. But, right, it's that list is, is all that they have told us so far. Um, I don't know if Omicron or future variants will change things.
All right.
The, um, I have had a parent ask me, you know, when are we gonna give up these stupid masks? And, um, uh, on February twenty-eighth, the Agency of Education, the Department of Health, are having another discussion for the governor on whether or not to continue the mask mandate in schools. I'm not changing a thing until they tell us we can change something. Um, I'm not the medical expert who's going to decide that. So at the moment, masks stay, um, but I think that's very possible, that there could be some new guidance come March. Just have to wait and see.
All right.
Um, and then I, we do have the twenty, whoops, twenty-two, twenty-three? Not twenty-one, twenty-two? Calendar in there, and Otter Valley's graduation is June eleventh.
I had a question about the calendar.
Okay.
Um, while you mentioned it, and let me find it here.
Please.
Thank you. So my question was, is that, um, we usually have early release days every third Wednesday, but I noticed that in February and March, and then April, um, they're weird. But, and I wondered why the in-service day wasn't the tenth, and the early release day, the seventeenth? You know, is that contractual or something?
It's not contractual. It's, it's, it's the oddness of the building of the calendar. So the basic hundred and seventy-five days has to be built by all the sending school districts to the Stafford Technical Center. So Stafford drives that. And Stafford drove the fact that the seventeenth would be a non-common day. And that's why we can't add into that if we're, that's not one of the one-seventy-five. So we needed to work around it.
So why isn't the seventeenth an early release day just before vacation?
I, this year, it's actually the week before, rather than the Friday before vacation, um.
Cause that's not the third Wednesday.
You're right.
I didn't know what the-
Is that to make it-
I don't have a particular reason.
Okay.
Is that to make it not the Friday before vacation?
Probably.
Maybe. I, I would think kids would love that.
I think there's other languages. Cause you can't take that day for-
Right.
I don't know.
Maybe, I don't know. I just was curious as to, you know, I, and then the April seventh, I just thought that that might throw people off, because it's not the third, they're used to every, you know, the third Wednesday of the month, and so there's, there's some-
It's good feedback to take back.
Some funky stuff going on there, and I just thought it would be confusing to parents.
Yeah.
So.
It's good feedback. We'll just have to communicate that really well, and-
Okay.
Next year's superintendent should look at that.
That's enough.
Oh, right, the next superintendent.
It's color-coded.
Are you pushing that off to the next person?
Yes, I am. That was, that's the first time I've said that.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
Although I understand that I just promised to stay if you don't find anybody.
That's true, she did. She did.
The, uh, so the list is growing, uh, that you're leaving for the superintendent?
Yeah, well, that was the first thing to go on it, but, yeah, it's now, it's now begun.
All right.
I won't be here to fix it next year, so.
All right, um, yes, Bill?
Um, first thing is that dealing with the calendar is an insoluble, uh, mess. Nobody agrees what it should be. And so it's always convenient to say it's the regional soup that did it, which is true. It is the law.
Okay.
Um, other thing, thinking about agenda items for next week, and I noticed Jean was, uh, touted in the VSBA little weekly thing that we're getting. And I am, there's a ton of things that are being pushed in the legislature, while the people in the trenches are saying, "No more. We, we're kind of busy out here." Uh, I'm wondering, would it be worthwhile to invite our legislators, or invite some Education Committee people for a segment on a board meeting?
Sure, we've done that before. We can do that again. Um-
Again, it probably won't be till-
It probably won't be till-
April.
Or May, at the very, well, we want them sooner rather than later, probably, because, um-
Maybe if they were brief in the-
If they were brief, we could do it at our reorganization meeting.
So-
That's the earliest we could get them here, probably. I mean, I talked to Peter Conlin, cause he's the, the Chair of the, um, yeah, well, he's also the Education Chair, I believe, so we'd like him to be here. Stephanie Jerome usually comes, Butch usually comes, um. So, yeah, we could ask them to come, and anybody else who wanted to, to Zoom in. We've, we've also had people Zoom in before, if that's easier for them.
Okay.
March sixteenth, is that, I mean, that's the earliest we could get them to come talk to us.
Works for me.
Okay. Yes, Angela?
Can you go ahead and do a summary? I cannot hear Bill at all.
Oh, sure.
I have no idea what he just said.
Oh, yeah. So Bill said that, um, he's seeing in our VSBA, uh, little thing that we get, uh, weekly from the VSBA, that the legislator, legislature is pushing a lot of new mandates, new legislation through, and, um, he's saying that the people who are working in education are saying, "Enough's enough. We're in the trenches. We can't do anymore." So he would like us to have, um, some members of our legislation come down and talk to us. So that's usually Peter Conlin, who is the Chair of the Education Committee and the Legislature. He's also on the ACSD Board, or maybe he was. I don't know if he is anymore. He's not the Chair anymore. Um, and also, we usually have Stephanie Jerome and Butch Shaw come and talk to us. And the earliest we could do that is March sixteenth, which is our reorganization meeting, which you're gonna be re-elected, um, too, because nobody's running in your seat.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So. Okay. Um, is there anything else that we need to discuss tonight?
I'd like to hear Jeanie's quick thoughts since she was on our program. What are the hot things that are happening that we need to look at in terms of our failure?
Okay.
Um, gosh, off the top of my head, we are asking the Legislature to please let us go through COVID, um, but they aren't. So, uh, probably that the two hottest things right now are, um, the weighted study, and the change in the education formula, and Act one-seventy-three, which is the change really in how we fund special education, and provide special education services. The two should be married, but they're not. And so, um, because they're not, we're probably, we budgeted and anticipated to start Act one-seventy-three, the special education changes, this July, because that's what the law says. And there was discussion about postponing it, but I haven't seen action on postponing it. But unfortunately, um, in my opinion, not just me, but unfortunately, the fact that those are two huge, very different laws that affect funding that are not at all married together, could create quite a mess, um, for education funding as we go forward. Don't know what's gonna happen to the, um, weighted study one. Um, we have not had the time to really delve into the current model, and how it affects us. A lot of the controversy out there is how English-language learner students will be funded, whether it'll be formulaic, or whether it'll be a separate carve-out. Um, other things that are happening, that are discussing, there's, there's a bill that's on a wall, I'm not sure if it's being talked about yet, that, um, that I testified against previously, and I will again if I have the chance, is a bill that allows, um, a teacher who's under contract to break the contract without penalty. And my concern about that, particularly in this time when there's such a teacher shortage, is a contract is a two-way agreement. We already have in our district, um, when you get your contract, if you want to explore other things, you let the superintendent know, and you have the opportunity to do that. But at some point, you have to commit. And then after that, according to your master agreement, you can charge a fee, um, for the, all the onboarding, all the PD, I mean, it's just a, a flat fee penalty. Um, Vermont NEA does not like that, and thinks that teachers should be able to leave at will, which is really concerning to me, as a superintendent who wants to see continuity for students. And I think that would greatly disrupt progress. Um, those are the ones on the top of my head. I'd have to pull up the SBA to tell you some others.
I'd certainly agree on the top, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? We don't need an executive session tonight, so I would, um, take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seven twenty-six P.M.
All right, second?
Second.
Okay, you can leave. Bye.